Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our fourteenth annual Pride City Council meeting for the cities of Black Diamond, Maple Valley, and Covington. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's a pleasure to see everybody in person. First time Covington's been in person for a council meeting in two years, so it's nice to see everybody. I know last year we met virtually for a visit meeting, and I just thank everybody for being here tonight. Let's start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, their public, their stance, the nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for that. Let's go into introductions, and we'll just go around the room. But I want to start with our two guests online. Start with DeeDee.
Hi there, I'm Dedham Pearson. I'm with the city of Maple Valley. I was just appointed on April 11.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Christina.
I am Christiana Delion. I was elected to the city council of Black Diamond, position five in 2019.
Welcome. Start with Joe.
Better get used to turning the mic down. I'm Joe Smolow. I've been on the Covington City Council since 2013.
Sue Dawson, Maple Valley City Council. Aaron Smith, Black Diamond, since November 21, 2017.
Yes, there you go.
Andy Johnson, Maple Valley City Council, been on council since 2004.
Dana Farno, Maple Valley City Council, been on council since 2010 with a two-year gap.
Councilmember Tammy Deedee, have been on the council since 2011, and also been on the council since 2014.
In your charge.
I'm in charge tonight.
Welcome, everybody, to Covington. I'm Jeff Wagner, Mayor of Covington. I've been on council since 2004, same guy as Linda and Nick.
May the fourth be with you.
I'm David. Did you see my socks?
Okay. John Kelly, Council since 2011.
Hi, I'm Debbie Page, Black Diamond City Council, since April of 2021.
I'm Victoria Shaw, Maple Valley City Council, as of January 1st.
I'm Sean Stiff, I'm on the Covington City Council.
Hi, everybody. I'm Courtney O'Donnell. I've been with the city of Black Diamond, position number six since November of 2020.
I'm Les Burberry, Maple Valley City Council, since 2016.
That's Porter, Covington City Council, since August 2020.
Hi, I'm Laura Philpott, City Manager for Maple Valley. I've been working for Maple Valley since 2015.
Reagan Bowley, Covington City Manager, 2015 as well.
And I see Trish has joined us. Trish, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, thank you. I'm Trish Stellard, and I am on the Black Diamond City Council seat two. And I just was elected. I started in January.
And move the Mason, Krista, and Shawna, introduce yourself.
Hi, Mason Morrissey, IC manager of City of Covington.
Krista Bates, City Clerk and Executive Assistant, City of Covington. Shawna Lee, City of Maple Valley, City Clerk and City Manager.
Well, thank you all very much for being here tonight. Like you said, it's an honor and a pleasure to be with our cities that we collaborate so well for fourteen, well, it's fourteen annual, skip the year 2020, but it's nice that we work together, not just locally with our cities, but collaboratively in the region and state and county, make sure that we can be represented well in the area and get recognized and stay with what we need to get, working with Dow and our representatives. I know that Reagan Dunn was supposed to be next up. Is he almost here? Okay.
Looks like you're at.
John, you got a John Kinley.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Hello, everyone. John Kinley, nice to meet you. Yes, he's almost here. There's David and there's Frank.
Well, I did, to be honest, I did tell him probably not until 7:10 that he'd have to be here, so.
I wouldn't.
You should tell him 6:30.
My bad, I should have, yeah. Yes, great.
So, really quick, while we're kind of waiting, we have a thank you letter for President Pat Sullivan for all of your service to the city of Covington, Black Diamond, and Maple Valley, and ask all the electeds, and I think this is it. So, but, they can add their signatures. Yep, and then please sign it, and when we get everybody to sign it, we'll send it to, now I'll take Shawna for checking it out for us. So we'll pass it around, and it says back, and then it's missing, and we'll get those signatures, and he's done a lot for our.
And then also, and thank you for doing this, Shawna, for that, because he'd been, he was the first mayor of Covington, and has done a lot, and then being the majority leader in the House really pushed through a lot for all of our cities. And he helped with the donor goal in Maple Valley to get that through.
And it's stuck on top. For that first part, it is, oh, you got the.
Yeah, yeah.
We thank him. Also, there's thank you cards here for Southeast Area Legislative Transportation Coalition, who will be like, make sure they sign those so we can mail those off to our representatives, thanking them for getting the funding for Highway 18, which is true. That's a seed we planted quite a while ago. They finally got the funding through, so it's nice to see that that's finally going to get pushed through. Look my name up. No, that's right. Actually, just tell them when we do that. I have it right there.
I mean, good luck. I mean, I'm just saying, like, we're setting the records for it in this Congress cap final home match. We should at least have one window.
Remember, Dan, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
My help, right?
Good timing, way to make an entrance.
Somebody was paid with a ROTA.
The funding that I'm sure you helped to make the state with, so thank you for that.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Well, it's a clicker, is it laser? How's everybody doing?
It is, it is. May the fourths with the belay.
Apologize for belay breaks, everybody, as always, busy times, huh? Let me just give you a brief update on what's going on with King County right now. Redistricting happened, always exciting, redistricting, so changed up kind of a lot for this district. So, this was all in Von Reichbauer's district, District Seven, it's now in the Ninth Council District. Big chunk of Renton got removed and put a Dave Up to Grove, and then I took that portion of Bellevue. There was a lot of give and take there, but anyway, that's, that's where we're, we're at. The districts are now not quite 300,260 something, a bit big, as our cities are getting bigger, right? Incorporated, King County continues to be about a quarter of a million people, the second largest city in the state, if it were a city, which it is not. Oh, we could do this. Let's talk, wait a minute. Is that maybe? Okay. Oh, yeah, okay. I think you guys can see it in the left-hand screen, okay, right? Okay, cool. All right, let's look at violent crime. This is important, this for folks to see. Major league increase in murder homicide there, if you see those statistics, 2018, 19, 20, 2021. There were actually record shootings last year in King County, 460 shooting victims, 85% were male, 28% were between the ages of 18 and 24, and 81% of the victims were people of color. We'll see that big spike in 2021. These are concerns, this is, I mean, they just are. I don't know what's, how else to sugarcoat it. You're not caring a whole lot about it necessarily. But gun crime, particularly gun crime, is a problem right now, so I want everybody to see that. King County Sheriff's Office, let me put this into perspective. So, Seattle PD lost 375 positions, either defunded or were phased out because folks wouldn't get vaccinated or a few other things, people took either retirement. Forty percent of the KCSO employees have been reduced since 2008. Thirty-five percent of our law enforcement services have been either cut or defunded or some combination of. So you see those great big red lines, a lot of it happened during the Great Recession, those great, whoop. So, you'll see in it's only, it's probably because it's version 1.0. So, so we were able to, I, basically how this works is there's amendment to.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, my gosh, we get a paper. So, the bottom line on that is what's happened is the county, to fill revenue shortfalls, particularly over the Great Recession, but beyond, just kind of kept rating the general fund, as all of you guys probably have had to do a little bit of yourselves. But basically, it went out, it went out of the sheriff's office, and, you know, you saw those little gray bars there, which I would always add some back in. So the proposed cuts were the red bars, the gray bars are what I was able to add back in. And then I just started losing the fight. I was able for many years to get stuff added back in. The pandemic is clearly, you know, one of the many factors involved in the increase in crime. But there are a lot of other factors that are involved. One of them is not having enough law enforcement in the community to do the investigations, to drill down and find out. Statistically, it's repeat offenders who are responsible, there's clusters of people that have committed the same crimes, and, and if they aren't investigating, you know, screw search, Christian arrested, you get, you'll get continuation of the, of the crime. And I think that's what's happening right now. That's part of, our part of the problem. So, there are now 108 vacant King County deputy positions in King County, and 88 non-deployable officers. So that's roughly 25% of the 770 employees in our sheriff's office. And, you know, they're having a hell of a time trying to get people to apply for those jobs right now. So, I was able to fund a full-time recruiter position, we got $15,000 hiring bonuses. It's trickling, it's trickling, and it's, it's a whole bunch of different challenges, but 15 probably isn't enough. And you've got, they're, they're, you know, the challenges aren't. Covington, Maple Valley, contract seems, you need to hold up our end of bargain, right? Contract works both ways. I'm sensitive to that, so I'm interested in hearing your perspective. Look at that, it's back up on there. Let's go over to the next slide. So Patty Colten though, yesterday, the executive announced that he was nominating Patty, she'll come before the King County Council for Charter Amendment Five that was passed, which gives us a confirmation vote. I don't expect there will be any problem with confirmation, that even though Patty's. And I got a lot of calls from folks in, in and outside of the department moving in support of Patty, which is good. Just to show you over here, this is the map of King County. The brown represents folks that voted in favor of appoint, an appointed sheriff by the exec, and the yellow represents folks that wanted to continue an elected sheriff, right? Isn't that interesting? Get out, out here, and it's overwhelming with an elected, which is very, very interesting. You know, I like Patty, and I think she's, she's been a real problem solver for us over the years at the county. And I think she comes in with wings laid, she'll have a different vision style than the previous sheriff, and we're already starting to see some of that right now, so I don't expect any problems with that confirmation going through. Speaking again on the criminal justice court backlog, King County Superior Court continues to backlog those felony cases. They just couldn't get to them as quickly through the pandemic. And so you're seeing it go up substantially. The county council did put a significant amount of money into supplemental funding to address this backlog, but it's still, you know, you still got a right, a sixth amendment right to confront your accuser, and a right for trial, and all that stuff, and that, that process just takes time, so. You know, it, it's, it's really a perfect story, so we got a lot of work to dig out from this pandemic. If it is in fact over, it's not going to be easy. Substance use disorder, this is an issue close to my heart. We are seeing 40% of adults experiencing adverse mental or behavioral health conditions during the pandemic. Increased depression, increased anxiety, double the increase in drug and alcohol addiction, cope with stress. In King County, overdose deaths have increased 70% between 2019 and 2022. Most of that is a result of fentanyl, which is a synthetic opioid, okay? What's happening is the cartels and super labs in Mexico are manufacturing counterfeit prescription pills like oxycodone. They look like oxycodone, they look like something you get, you know, maybe out of your grandmother's pharmaceutical, whatever pantry closet, they come from a pharmacy, but they're not real. They're made with fentanyl, that's a substance that affects the body, and it's, it's incredible, it can be incredibly toxic anything more than just a trace. Met with the DEA, especially charged last week, and they're now seeing fentanyl counterfeited into everything you can think of, biking and Percocet, Tylenol II, fake pills with fentanyl. So, all I can tell you is, look at that bar graph. I mean, this is serious. So we put together a LACE and lethal campaign, right here, $500,000. One, just takes one pill to take away, and that's what we're trying to, to make clear. Overdose is now, fentanyl is now the leading cause of death for males between the ages of 18 and 45 in the United States. It's a problem. We got to do something. Part of it is education, part of it is we got to, we got to start forcing these dealers accountable. So DEA is very interested in joining with us on this anti-stigmatization campaign. Doing that, I got a conference later on this month, we'll talk a lot about these things, substance use disorder.
July 19.
May 19, okay, May 19. This, by the way, we got to pay attention, this is going to involve us too, moving forward. I hope, I hope, Toma High School, by the way, has great, they have a club, two youth, put together, Sean was out there with me the other day, and they put together an awareness club, and they're doing good stuff, so. Good, the fentanyl overdose deaths, 2022 is in there. Don't let that 2022 statistic see what was hap, last year. We tend to see this, this summer comes around, we tend to see more of that, that use. So I'm expecting it's going to do this thing here as well, so. 123% increase in fentanyl deaths in 2020, 247% increase in 2019. There's a link between gun violence and illicit fentanyl. Yeah, so we got to continue to work on that. 2021 to 2022 investments, many of you are here on this screen, I see Linda there, and everybody's there. 25 for the skate park, some money for museum over Black Diamond, Covington Storehouse, the Chamber of Commerce, significant contribution there, city of Maple Valley, Ironman, significant contribution there, it was a great success for this community and for Maple Valley. It was great to see everybody come out there. Mummettens Grants as well, Little League, city of Covington. Yeah, that just came out, the final, that was Jenkins Creek Park. And it's not because it's right over by my house. A hundred thousand for the Covington, Maple Valley Aquatic Center. So that, I just, the slides I wanted to rip through with all of you, just like we go. I think the, the big picture challenge right now is, I don't know whether the pandemic is over or not. I really would like to think it is, but those statistics are coming back up a little bit. We, you know, I've been saying for a while now, we just need to start to learn to live with, that's my own view, and deal with it. And we've got to start calling out a whole variety of ways that, that, you know, we, we may for ourselves, I think, in good faith, or, you know, did what we need to do with what we had, and especially when we didn't have vaccine, you know, vaccine. I mean, you're seeing test scores with way down, right, as a result of this. Mental health challenges, substance use challenges, crime. And quite frankly, there was a lot of money spent by the federal government, and there's inflationary challenges as well. So, that's, that's what we're working on. I think we're all, we're hard in the right place trying to make it better. Those are the things on my mind, but I'm happy, Mr. Mayor, if you want, I'll have to take questions too, but if there's any questions, I'll try to.
This is missing, yeah. So much a question, but as a statement, I can't see this pandemic, and then, like I said, mental health and anxiety and stuff like that. Public safety is probably the top priority here, Covington, and we're struggling as well. You're reaching out to others that is here, but some of the things we're looking at, and how we make that better, given what we can control. You know, so it's going to take a broad spectrum, and a lot of people are getting involved, and there's only a tiny part that Covington do. So, I guess just letting the county know that we look departmentally, any and all, on how we can address that, but I, I see two things happening. I see, I see some of our, some of the criminals becoming involved. Really seeing that there is no repercussion for their, for their actions. And the other thing that scares me is I see the response to that is, is some of the public taking the law into their own hands, and it's getting really volatile out there. And so, I mean, we just had a shooting over here at the marijuana dispensary. So, I, I don't have a solution to it, but it's not going in the right direction. Taking it seriously, I guess that's what we're going to do, there seems to be a circle of nobody wants to step up, as in, you know, some of the retailers don't want to press charges, some of the prosecutors don't want to press charges. Our police do a great job of arresting people, but they get turned loose. So eventually, someone's just got to step up and say, you know what, we're going to press charges on this, and so. Pressuring prosecutors, because I'm not saying that everyone should be thrown in jail, but is, people saying there's no, no consequence to this, to be actually walking in, walking out with a carload of stuff, and, like I said, I'm worried people are going to start shooting first, and God help, I don't want to be in a storm, so, you know, so I'm just kind of a soapbox, but that's something I'm going to see, and it's, you know. We've got to do something. So the county needs to hear more about that. I know it's dangerous down in Seattle, too, but.
Well, no, I'm with you. Thanks, Councilmember. I drove right past, on the 18th of March, I was driving, and all the cops were over there. I'm like, what the heck was that? So I went over on TV, and that was fatal shooting, it's not the only one that happened, just back today's night before, in the northern part of the district, from Delve, Victoria, there was a shooting as well, so very, very scary, so. Couple things, marijuana, let's talk about that. Yesterday, the county council, law and justice unanimously approved new marijuana security task force, which we're looking at. Sort of harden these, these outlet facilities, and what steps we might be taking to try and make these safer. We disagree with legalization of marijuana, we all agree. It's a law for this state, people shouldn't be shot there. Our cash-friendly businesses and operators in their own bank, and that's probably a law that needs to change the federal, so that, I think, is going through, we'll have some good input there. So I co-authored, I ran President Bush's national efforts, by the way, this program called Project City. One of the, the key themes behind that is 86% of, of the criminals reoffend the first statute, so. So what I mean that that is, same proof of people committing these crimes, it's proven, you can go to the Bureau of Justice, this is when you can see that, right now, we've adopted a sort of revolving door of justice system right here in Covington. Once you get back out, out on the streets now, that's a problem, you have to decide how we're going to, we're going to handle that, and as a community, so, I, whatever's happening out there right now is not working, that's probably the safest thing to say. Obviously, law enforcement systems need reform, but they also need to be able to fund, to do both at the same time. So I would, I guess I would leave it there, but I think it's an important issue, and I think we're seeing big issues right now. People worry about cost of living, that's a huge issue, we worry about crime, we're worried about cost of energy. Crime local, I'm starting to see transportation come back up, because people are going to work, so, you know, the same stuff we've always dealing with and fighting, and working on, and continue to do that.
Darren Smith, Black Diamond, specific in the public safety realm, you mentioned hiring bonuses. Now, Black Diamond's on a contract city. When we, we can't compete with these larger municipalities and governing bodies that can offer 15K, 20K signing bonuses. We've lost officers to cities that are doing that. And is the county exploring a method of supplementing the loss of public safety officers that are leaving for some of these larger cities that offer the sign-on bonuses to help us smaller cities stop the bleeding of the limited supply that we can have as a small city?
So, some kind of a grant for hiring local law enforcement within the missed offices of family?
Yes, just like I said, to offset the officers that we are losing, that are going to, and, you know, I'm blaming them, but signing on with places that do offer the 15K, 20K signing bonuses, that's something a city of 5,000 can't compete with.
Yeah, it's a great suggestion. I like your idea, I think it's a good one.
Christiana. Hi, yeah, thank you. I know, being remote, I know it's a little bit tricky with these hybrid setups, so I appreciate that. Yeah, a lot of different questions, and I realize that we won't have time for all of it tonight, so thank you also for being here to answer questions. I know you have a lot going on, but I wanted to circle a little bit to the fact that I see a lot right now with concerns about, again, the hiring of officers and some of the crime issues going on, and it feels a little bit like kind of a bit of a silo, and I want to really talk a bit to the fact that you were alluding to the cost of, the cost of living around here, which is a very real concern for a lot of us. I do wonder if there's a way that we could be approaching more when it comes to, a lot of the times when we've talked locally about the crimes of opportunity as being that crime of a lack of opportunity, how few jobs there are to really, you know, pay for the kind of housing that we have around here. So I guess part of it is, I'm wondering, first off, what from your office do you see could be done on the county level and on county? what from your office do you see could be done on the county level and on county-related zoning issues to help with affordable housing, because right now it's nuts and Black Diamond, our houses are selling for over a million dollars. We have rent going for two to three thousand a month for apartments. Because we're in a media market with Bellevue and with Sammamish, which is just bonkers in my mind, but I do see that a lot of reasons tied to some of these crime issues. And also, I think some of the issues related to substance abuse are also, at the end of the day, related to cost of living and this lack of of opportunity and this despair and also lack of other, you know, things to do in the meantime. So that's one part. It's just housing affordability. What are we also doing for job opportunities? Another one that I really wanted to focus on was about when you were talking about death, you know, and gun violence. What, I know that there has been at least a little bit of some initiative done on the executive side on some of that. I feel like there's been kind of so a lot of, to put it mildly, a lackluster response there, but I'm still wondering what could be done in partnership with cities. Also, when we're looking at the root causes of gun violence, because in a lot of cases, it's not one thing, and I I know that we were talking about correlation with fentanyl, but I'm not, I would like to explore more of causation, because I'm not sure how that's tied when we also do see that there's a lot of other issues going on. The other thing, just to talk about too, that I think is worth kind of piggybacking off of what Councilmember Smith was talking about, there is a really real, real concern about the kind of bidding wars that are happening among police departments that are really making it hard for smaller cities to to work on that. I wouldn't go so far as to say that was a defunding thing. If in two thousand nine, that was where a lot of police officers were losing, you know, their jobs, that was the recession. But all the same, I'm still kind of wondering, how, how can this be something that, again, could have like an effect on cities like Black Diamonds? As a contract city, when we're really seeing some of the struggles related to these kinds of hiring bonuses? Also, one more thing too, I know you're passionate about substance abuse, and that's fantastic. What could be done also for that kind of prevention level? I know that in our local area, we're working on therapeutic court systems. I'd love to see surrounding cities getting more of that grant support as well, including our neighbors in Enhamclaw. They've rejected that grant money, but I'm hoping that maybe because we really need an interlocal approach to this, that maybe your office can help with that. So I know that's a lot throwing at you, but I also know our time's limited. Just love to hear that. Yeah.
Good stuff. Yeah, I agree with you on substance use. Start point is useful tool. It helps. We don't have enough treatment providers, treatment beds in this county. So I put a number of provisions in Harvard bond measure to help with that, education. Triage, very important. Let's see, question number one was housing. So there's, we got to be careful, the government doesn't get away with that problem. So in King County passed a rental code that said we can't renters, excuse me, landlords and undercorporated King County can no longer require credit checks. So if you're gonna rent your house in undercorporated county, you can't get a credit score unless they give it to you, so. So that's a problem. So we saw rental rates increase by twenty percent in one year. And when there's not, people are selling their houses to nonincorporated because they can't meet the mandate. That was an eight to one vote, by the way. And then if if they're selling a rental stock in unincorporated county, it's gonna put more pressure on the cities out here, and that's a problem. The state changed the landlord tenant law. If if there, if you're in a month-to-month lease, there's no, the renter, the renter has to leave. The only way you can end that lease that goes month-to-month is to sell that property or move back in your own property. So the regulatory climate is creating a lot of this problem. Buildable land is also a huge problem as well. There's not enough buildable land, and so there's all this pressure on the spaces. I think that's another one. We need more funding for law enforcement for higher bonuses, pay law enforcement more. And that's a big problem, so. Fix that problem, sorry. Thanks for the question, Christine.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Really appreciate you being here today. Thank you for always joining us on Tri-City. Glad to bring a wealth of information.
Glad to be here, just down the street. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks again. Have a great evening. Hopefully, now that you're going home, you don't have to go through the paper. All right, with that, we will move into our city updates. And first up is Covington, our city manager. The manager, Regan Bowley.
Thank you. First, I I know everyone is appreciative of this setup and be back, but really Krista led this charge, Sean was a huge help, and Mason, so thank you to all of them. We get to come and just do our thing and they make it happen, so thank you to that. But I just, I I love the fact that as a tri-cities, we have this partnership. We can form this alliance to fight the dark side. And every piece, really, to the galaxy. So that that's my nod to Star Wars. That was for you, Sean Kelly. So let's, let's get into our, to our update. I have to start with finance. What a crazy year it was last year for our finance team. A lot of just added effort and work with ARPA, with CARES Fund and grant management. We, we did a tremendous amount of grant management here in the city, which is a ton of work, a lot of paperwork, and especially our own grants. We managed all those, so they just did an amazing job and still got us a clean audit, which we're grateful for and, and keep doing awesome. A really cool campaign that we did this last year was the Spend Local, Win Big campaign. And I need to talk a little bit about Karma. Karma is not a Star Wars character. Star Wars, or sorry, Karma is our city mascot. Karma the chameleon, you maybe have heard the song. Anyway, this was funded through a Port of Seattle grant, and really, this was, we identified the businesses that were most negatively impacted by the pandemic. We went and bought a bunch of gift cards. We called them Karma Cash and went around to local shoppers that were shopping and handed out Karma Cash. Went really, really well, did the hashtag shop the cub, which played into some other marketing stuff we've done, and people really appreciated that, especially our local businesses that have had a pretty rough time during the pandemic. Community development, last year was our busiest year, which is surprising to a lot of people during a pandemic. And with everything going on, being short-staffed, it was a heavy load. I want to talk about our small business liaison. If anybody here has ever been through a permitting process, it sucks. There's just no, no way around that. So we try to improve and try to make it better. When a big business or company comes in, they've got people they pay to do this, they get the system, they know how to do it. But our small businesses don't, and it's a huge hurdle and can be a barrier to opening up business. So we created a new position called Small Business Liaison. This guide right here is an introduction to permitting. When that person comes in, we ask them if they'd like to meet with our small business liaison. They have a free consultation with them. They give them this introduction to permitting and go through what a realistic timeline is, right? If you're a small business, hasn't been through this process, you come in and think, I can open up next week, like, you know, it just doesn't work that way. Helps them identify the the requirements on the state side, the timelines. So that's been a nice help that we've heard a lot of good, positive feedback from. Some of the work, hundred sixty-four building permits processed, over fifty-one hundred inspections, and then we issued two hundred twenty-eight business licenses last year, a lot of those for home-centered businesses. So Form Based Code, this is a little different, something that we did with the hundred thousand dollar grant we, we received. And really what it was is we want to develop our downtown core or redevelop that when it starts to happen and focus on the form and not the use. So we want the form to be aesthetically pleasing and connected to each other and really make this a really cool experience when you come to our downtown. And we've got Lake Point coming in, right? So there's gonna be this, I don't know if you want to call it competition, but the thought is we need to do something here in our downtown core, so this, this develops the form of what it should look like and how it should flow, and then we don't care so much about the uses. And if the use fits into that, it can go there. So that was the process running when a lot of public input and process. Really great exercise, and that's our new downtown code. Lake Point, as I mentioned, a lot of you are familiar with this project. Some may not be, but this will be over seventeen hundred residential units, up to one point three million square feet of commercial space wrapped around kind of a twenty acre, nineteen acre lake. It'll look different than that, be shaped different. Their reclamation, they're bringing in a ton of dirt, getting the road prisms in place and making that happen. It is operating twenty-four seven right now. Black Diamond's had a big project. They can know what that's like, but the associated road projects are really the trigger for when that starts developing their actual site. And so I'll talk a little bit about those, those road projects. The whole project is the Covington Connector. That will connect five sixteen to Highway eighteen and the two fifty-six interchange right there. Phase one is completed. That's our two oh fourth improvement. In fact, you saw a little bit of that today, driving into Covington. I hear it backed up into Maple Valley, so you're welcome. I think that was Pat Solvem or playing that on, something like that, so. Phase two is underway. That's reconstructing the two fifty-six interchange, so kind of the bookends are happening first. And then we'll get to the Lake Point Boulevard, which will run through the actual, actual site, but all these are moving and excited to see that, that happening. Jenkins Creek to one hundred eighty-fifth, one of our other road projects. This is a widening for that part. We keep pushing that bottleneck a little closer to Maple Valley each time we get funding for it. So we got some initial bids for this project. We had just over twelve million for this project. We got some bids. It came in too high with like, let's rebid it in early twenty twenty-two. And the bids came back seven million dollars over budget. So a huge funding gap. We were able to come up with about two million dollars in transportation impact fees, so we needed another five million. At this point in the legislative session, the transportation package had already passed the Senate and moved to the House. So over that weekend, we spent a lot of time with legislators and a lot of time on the phone. And they said, well, do what we can. That went into closed-door deliberations, and when it all shook out, that five million was included in transportation package, so that project's fully funded and construction begins next week. So we will continue to see some growing pains. I'll call it growing pains instead of horrible, horrible traffic. So, but anyway, it's going to happen, so. So Co Park or South Covington Park, this is right across the street on Wax Road from our town center site. So we purchased three parcels. They're outlined in this dotted line. And we're looking at two other parcels over here right now that are pending purchase, so it'll be a really large, wonderful passive use connected park to our downtown area and to our future town center. You can see some designs here. The council went through with some trails, play area. We'll obviously have the Jenkins Creek back there. So excited about, about that happening. And Jenkins Creek Park. That is, if you haven't been back there, it's a real gem, and when you're in there, you really feel like you're in the middle of nowhere. Councilmember Dunn mentioned that park a little bit. The problem with Jenkins Creek Park is it just has horrible access. There's no parking. It's hard to get to. So we went to work on that several years ago. We talked to a property owner who owns just about two acres, right, abutting this park. And we entered into a right of first offer on that property. Finally, we were able to secure it, and that's, we've got some preliminary designs right now for parking and access, so that'll make that gem a little more accessible. Covington Park, Covington Community Park, our athletic field up there is always busy and always happening. And the turf management is extremely difficult on a field like that. So we did get a hundred thousand dollar grant from King County to re-turf that to help keep up with the amount of use. So during this pandemic, I coached in several of our, our athletic leagues, and to be able to bring those leagues back last year, I mean, those kids were just so amped about it and just had a ton of fun playing. We, you can see, we had just over seventeen hundred participants of athletic programs, over eleven hundred are rec. And then sixty-nine thousand, what we call splashes, that's not unique visitors, but people that attended at our aquatic center last year. So really busy as we're opening up and things got back into, to running well, and our, our parks and rec department did amazing. A cool innovative idea that our arts commission came up with during the pandemic last year is how do we do these art programs virtually? So they created this virtual art show, the first time that we had done that. People submitted stuff online, all the voting was online. And they had two different awards, the People's Choice Award, and then the Arts Commission also awarded one, so really great way to engage the community and keep them active in arts during the pandemic as well. So public safety, we've talked a little bit about that tonight already, but it is a paramount concern here in Covington. You see in literally every crime stat, they are increasing, and Covington's no exception. It's happening here as well. One of, one of the things the council's done is funded a position for a community care specialist. And this is a person that will go around with our police officers, be available and really facilitate the mental health and other services that some people need. Right? These people that, we don't need to arrest them, right? We'll turn them over to our community care specialists, and they'll help, help facilitate the services that they need. So we're, we're, we're just starting to advertise for that position now and look forward to bringing that on soon. SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. As we talked about, about public safety and thought, a lot of these things are out of our control. We're losing officers. That's out of our control because we contract with the county. They're not hiring new officers because they can't recruit fast enough. So what can we do besides those things? And one of our top priorities, this, this is several things we came up with, but one of them is SEPTED. We can train on SEPTED and, and work with our businesses, incorporate it into our development codes. And so we held a training here in Covington in fall of last year. We had all of our planners in the city, almost all of our police officers came to that. We brought in an outside consultant, trains nationally. Maple Valley sent some people over, I believe Black Diamond did as well. We had Seattle PD, and we had people from all over the region come to this training, and it was just really, really excellent. And so we're going to start at the end of the summer, we're going to do a kickoff meeting where we introduce businesses to SEPTED principles and then do like some lunch and learn, it's quick kind of lunch and learn sessions where they can come in. Christina did it, so she's our, she's our expert professional. I haven't told her that yet, but she'll be doing her trainings. So anyway, we're really excited about what that can be, and just another added element to our public safety. And then a few other things. I do want to talk about Public Safety Committee. I think Sean may have mentioned this, but the council at our summit in January formed a sub-council, a subcommittee over public safety. It's councilmembers Simone, Porter, and Mayor Pro Tem Smith and myself. And this is really to assess the feasibility of, one, should we stay in the contract? If we don't, can we do our own police force? And what about partnerships with other cities? The, the local control that we have keeps diminishing and the costs keep increasing. So where's that tipping point? And that's what we're really evaluating. One of those things is ongoing funding. And a BNO, a Business and Occupation Tax, is not popular, but it's one of the considerations. The council didn't want to make any decisions on that until first hearings from the businesses. So each council member, myself, we walked around postcards to every brick and mortar business in this city. And we handed them a postcard with a letter explaining what the BNO is with a QR code and a link to the survey and asked them to please take this couple of minutes survey so we can know what, what you're dealing with and how you feel about BNO. Overwhelming, we had a, a great turnout of respondents on the survey. Overwhelmingly, surprisingly, people don't like BNO. Yeah, but, but what was really amazing is, is the commitment that these businesses have. They said, if this Covington City Council can commit that these funds will go to these things that we listed, like an additional investigator, a business liaison, a police officer, that's a business liaison, we're directly with businesses, work with loss prevention, some of these things, they said that we'll get behind it and we'll support it unanimously across the board. There were like one or two, like, no, we hate every tax. We don't want this either, but for the most part, it's pretty exceptional. So that's one of the options that we have that the subcommittee will be presenting to the council soon. Another thing that I'm really excited about, and I, I got this idea from actually Benjamin Franklin, if you've ever heard of him. So he started the first street cleaning program, and he started paying people to clean up streets. And, and as we looked at our city over the last couple of years, we see it continuing to look dirtier and dirtier. Our bus stops look horrible, and we needed to clean up our downtown core. So the council approved hiring. We're calling it the Clean Team. Right now, there's So the council approved hiring, we're calling it the Clean Team. Right now, there's only one member. And it's her, right there in the middle, Jennifer, but she's got some helpers. And her job is this, coordinate our adopted street program. And we're adding more streets. We've got all of them full, so we're adding more streets now. Coordinating service projects and then picking up litter in our downtown, running our abandoned shopping cart program, removing graffiti, and just keeping troubled areas clean. Another important thing that we're a part of with our chamber is the Clean Safe Welcome Committee, and she'll be leading the clean aspect of that. We're excited about that. Communications, obviously, our online stuff just skyrocketed. You can see we had over five hundred thousand page views, website users up seventy percent, and all of our social media platforms are up seventy eight percent in usage last year. So our new vision mission goals, you can see them hanging on the wall over there. After twenty five years as a city, we thought, let's, let's do this and let's do a great, a great progress. We brought in someone from the Drucker Institute. We had our city council, our leadership team, and one or two people from each of our commissions. And we did this, this workshop to really develop a new vision, mission, and goals. And I'll have our city council introduce them.
Our vision, Covington, a vibrant, engaged, economic strength, and healthy space environment.
So we're really excited about about those. Again, moving forward, public safety is going to be priority. Well, with those new goals that the council adopted, we'll develop our, our new strategic plan. And then, of course, the return of all of our summer events in person. So Covington will be a happening place this summer, a lot going on. And of course, I have to end with No, it's, it's called a present, it's an online. Of course I will, Sean. Happy to take any questions if there are any.
Curious if your community care specialist position really my curiosity. So it sounds like this is someone that's going to be I'm wondering about their availability. It sounds like one person for now, are they going to ride along to the twenty four seven call or?
So I think we just, we talked about that they'll be the swing shift. So they'll start kind of afternoon, go into the evening kind of hours. That's when our police chief is identified when they're most needed. And there will be some on-call work obviously as well. But yeah, it's, it's going to be ride-alongs, it's going to be being called out on, on, depending on what our officers. Yeah, no, we're excited about it. And that, that's what the House Bill fifteen ninety five is, we're using to, to fund that position.
Thanks for the good presentation. It's always interesting. It amazes me what you can do with presentation. What's your homeless population?
Well, we're filling the bus up to send them back.
So I don't have accounts on that, nor do I, I think the count's been done recently. So I know we talked about it a couple of years ago about doing one out out in another area because we just don't have an accurate account of that. I think when we, pre-pandemic, started talking about that, a lot of it were kids in the Kent School District who were considered homeless, but they, they were living with grandparents or aunts and uncles or friends in the family. But that's how they were classified. That was the majority makeup. But there are some open spaces around town where we do have some small homes.
So one of the areas that is concerning, of course, is some businesses don't want to prosecute for crimes. And we've been studying the municipal legislation. Is that something that is under consideration here? And if so, any thoughts on that?
Yeah. So the ISQ legislation, if you don't know, is they have just adopted new codes where if a business fails to prosecute something that they knew about or should have prosecuted, then the city has the authority to strip them of their business license. So it's a major step. Yeah. So I did share that with our sub, Public Safety Subcommittee. And so they're aware of it. At this point, it's like, that's maybe a last resort.
Regan, thank you very much. And this is Maple Valley. Laura, I won't call you a house member, sorry.
So a long time ago, in a galaxy far, far away, or maybe twenty five years ago, in an area in South there was a wonderful city called Maple Valley. I want to start by sharing a video clip from a video that the Chamber of Commerce put together. And I'll talk a little bit more about their website in minutes.
This is a one of a kind place. Around each corner, and everywhere you look, see the postcard comes alive.
So that's just a small clip of the video that the chamber has put out. And the reason why I'm highlighting this is Maple Valley is about partnerships. Anytime that we can partner with one of our community groups, it's a priority for us. And so we paid for a part of the chamber's website through Maple Valley Funds, as well as through our Port of Seattle grant. And this website is available to all businesses, whether you're a chamber member or not, is one of the requirements that the city council put on them. It has become an amazing tourism resource. So previously, we haven't had a great tourism location. They hold an event calendar for the whole community. So any group in the community can put their events, so you have a one stop shop, whether it's a rotary event or a chamber event, you can go to one place. They're also hosting, job postings for all businesses in Maple Valley. So if you have a chance to go check it out, you should. It's absolutely amazing, top notch. So what have we been focused on over the last six to twelve months? I think it's the same as everybody. Super important for our community. How do we find that sense of normalcy again? How do we come out of this pandemic and feel like the community that we've been? And so I wanted to highlight, because to us, one of the most important things was those, those events. Those are what make us feel like community that bring people together. So as you know, many of you know, it's been talked about multiple times, we held our first annual IRBI seventy point three Washington Maple Valley event last year. And it just felt so good to have our park full and vibrant, people from all over the country. But this video again is one of the contents that was created for that website for the Chamber of Commerce. So again, also a parks and rec, just like Covington. Regan talked about how amazing those Parks and Rec programming was coming out last year when we opened those back up. We had record number of families joining. We added cricket. We added outdoor park four. We added wilderness camp. And wilderness camp is, to me, is so important because it's from twelve to fifteen. There's lots of opportunities. There's lots of opportunities for kids twelve and younger to do day camp, to have different offers, different ways to entertain them. They can be, they can go into daycare options. But the twelve to fifteen, it kind of potentially could cause some trouble, right? If they just left idle. So we've created a wilderness camp. We even secured eight bikes through a grant program to help support that. And we take those kids all over and hikes and wilderness adventure. And it's, it's just been really well received. Um, so and then our last event of twenty twenty one, that's worth highlighting, is our nineteenth annual hometown holidays.
To the nineteenth annual Maple Valley hometown holidays. Amanda, you have the honor this year of lighting the Christmas tree, the home tree right there. Are we all ready? Okay, here we go. Five, four, three, two, one. Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
So the reason why I highlight these, it's just so important. That event just made, you know, us feel like we were coming back together. So twenty twenty two, events on the horizon. We've actually already held our fishing derby this year. And it was the first year since, I think, since I've lived in Maple Valley, that the sun was out for the fishing. I think that the, that the world is ready for us to come back together. Our farmer's market opens this Saturday. You have not been to the Maple Valley Farmer's Market, you have to go. It's amazing. Maple Valley Days, we're having our parade this year. We're having our carnival. It's going to feel like it was in two thousand nineteen. On the Move, an exciting program I want to share. So all of, not all of our residents can make it to our beautiful hundred acre Lake Wilderness Park to our rec programs. We have kids that stay at home while the parents go to work. So we have a brand new program that's going to drive around neighborhood parks and take the park programming to them. And we have a few lower income areas where we've partnered with the food bank. And the food bank's going to provide lunches during those parks and rec programming. And we heard from the school district today that they'd like to provide books so that we can hand books out as well. Fourth of July. We're going to celebrate Fourth of July then, but guess what? We're going to celebrate it on the third. I'm so excited about that. That means that everybody can actually sleep in on the fourth when they have the day off. And then on the fifth, they can wake up refreshed and go go back to work. And then all of our other normal programs in the summer, just like Covington mentioned, and then our second annual Ironman event, and then it will be our twentieth hometown holidays. So excited for that. Council meetings, bringing our council back together in person was also something that was, it just really felt good. We remodeled our Maple Room at Lake Wilderness Lodge. And it's fabulous. We now have three eighty inch screens, two fifty inch screens. We did our first hybrid meeting there in October. We used to meet at the Thomas School District Administration Building. I think many of you knew, knew that. We're now meeting here. And it is just, it works extremely well. And we were able to use our ARPA funds for that. It's super awesome. But it's not just about getting that sense of normalcy. There's a lot of healing to do. And so it is a time to heal. And what, what is healing? You know, old Ben said that was really important. It's really important. Mental health and quality of life are extremely important. So we shared last year during the tri-city meeting that we hired a community resource coordinator in partnership with the Thomas School District. That has just been fabulous. We've done a number of virtual community events that are focused on mental health, including impact of social media, anxiety, cyberbullying, and suicide prevention. They have just been really well, well attended. We're going to start shipping that to in-person sessions starting now. We also sponsored a program called Mental Health First Aid Classes. I took this alongside a number of my staff members. It's such a fabulous program. I think I've shared some of the contacts with you as well. And it's something that you can use in your daily life with your kids, with your neighbors, with your coworkers. It's just, the tools you learn from that are invaluable. Actually, I wish I would have known them years ago. And then also I have on here, we, our Kindness Connects program that we do annually, the the postcard there in the corner, that's kind of hidden under the talking cities of Black Diamond. So the Kindness Connects, it's some cards that we pass out. And it really is like, sometimes you don't know where somebody is. And sometimes that's just that connection, that human connection, handing somebody a card and saying, you know, you're, you're important. That could change the trajectory of their day, of their week, their month, their year. So that's something that we are going to continue to promote. We also partnered with the school district. They pass those cards out as well. And we leave it to the farmer's market with them. So it's just going to, it's just such a great program. And then lastly on here, I did have, from our public safety side, they have been working really closely with our community resource coordinator and the school district on that fentanyl crisis that council member Dunn shared with us. It is hitting all of us. And a number of our youth in our community have had really close calls with overdose. And we need to get ahead of that. And so we're also we've also developed a sharps cleanup and disposable disposal program because it's also part of quality of life and all of that education and connection, any, anything we can do to educate our public about what's happening and the how to deal with those, and have the right tools, it's important. ARPA funds, we're still talking about how we're going to heal. How are, how are our businesses healing? Well, we gave out twenty six grants to small businesses in Maple Valley totaling two hundred fifty one thousand. And then we gave out two hundred seventy six thousand dollars to our three nonprofits that serve Maple Valley residents, including the Food Bank. My Maple Place, which is really focused on rental assistance. And then the Greater Maple Valley Community Center, which is focused on providing senior lunches and other programs that they, they felt were important. But you know, you drive around Maple Valley, you can see the change. And part of the change, I wanted to highlight, what are some big things that have changed? One is we now have an Amazon center in Maple Valley. We got to tour it. It's amazing how they operate, how efficient. And it's, it's, they've been amazing partners, they've been great. Witty Road, we have another phase of Witty Road is our signature corridor. So we're continuing to slowly piece by piece improve that roadway. And it's just, it's adding that non-motorized element. So now we have even more residents that can ride their bike or walk and get to that hundred acre beautiful park, Lake Wilderness, get to the regional King County trails. And then artwork up on the right hand corner, we have this beautiful new artwork on the wall on one sixty nine. So if you get a chance, you're avoiding, you can't hang any, you need to drive around, but drive down one sixty nine and check out the new artwork we have. It's absolutely gorgeous. And we haven't got one negative comment from the public yet. All positive, just so amazing. And then on the bottom right hand corner, I'm sharing a brand new apartment complex that just opened. And the reason why this is really relevant is our council just recently adopted new zoning for our commercial areas that allow for multifamily. And so we're going, we know that there's a number of applications coming. There'll be, there'll be additional multifamily coming into Maple Valley. But this is the most recent that's, that has opened. But yeah, the best is yet to come. And so coming in our future, we, there's a lot of things we want to do. There's a lot of shiny objects, there's a lot of projects. And so our council sat down earlier this year and they said, we really want to phone in and focus on what, what are we going to, what are we going to put the target on and really? So I'm going to talk about a few of those items. And the first one that I am excited about is the Lake Wilderness Clubhouse. And it's the Lake Wilderness Golf Club. Yes, golf course, but it's going to be the Lake Wilderness Clubhouse. And that's a very important distinction because this is going to serve so much more than the golfers. It's going to serve, it's going to have banquet facilities, places where you can have a wedding. You rotary auctions and whatever else. And there's also going to be a restaurant with golf simulators in there. So you can you can do batting cage practice with your, your baseball team, Little League. So it's an opportunity for more things for our community and our families to do. And what's not in the picture here is, which will be attached on the same campus, is a miniature golf facility. So again, another way to bring our residents into this property that they own, when you don't necessarily have to have your handicap card and know how to golf eighteen holes. Um, the other thing, state route, one sixty nine is always on everyone's mind. And so we're working hard to improve. And the council has made it a top priority to get this section done between Rock Creek Elementary to Thomas School District Administration and the Maple Valley Farmer's Market, our legacy site. So this section, and we're looking at two roundabouts with sidewalks on both sides, ride in, ride out for the legacy site of the school district. So it's just going to really improve capacity and really improve safety on working with the state to get that design finalized. And working with the state, you know, it takes a little bit longer. But speaking of the state, we're extremely grateful that we were able to have five million dollars added to the most recent transportation package for a pedestrian bridge in the same area. So connecting our neighborhoods, connecting our east side of Maple Valley on one sixty nine to our west side. And it's so important because as we develop the farmer's market or the legacy site, which we'll talk about more And it's so important because as we develop the farmer's market or the legacy site, which we'll talk about more, we have our future downtown and we have the regional trail, it, it'll just really create that non-motorized connectivity for our community. And as you can see, we're not super far in design, because that's kind of a... Actually, I had an antipause.
You're on one side.
Yes, this will allow the deer and the elk to come back and forth. So if somebody don't know, one sixty-nine divides our community, the elk live on one side and the deer live on the other, actually a fact. So um, it's speaking of our legacy site, we want, our council wants, every, our community wants, they want a lasting legacy. So twenty-some years ago, they bought this fifty-four acres called the Legacy Site. And various councils and task forces and community groups have put their heads together multiple times and what are we gonna do with that? They've done multiple surveys, well, I think our council's finally like, ready, let's, we're gonna do this. And they said, we want civic open space in this property, we want a splash park, flash ice skating rink, you know? Uh, fun things to do, a natural playground, an indoor market. We have this beautiful, amazing outdoor farmer's market, but what about an indoor facility where we can have markets year-round? Um, and then that connection to our downtown, we'll talk about it in a minute, and some additional parking. So this is actually right, kind of um in the need of working with a subcommittee from councils. So there's a few of them here that are, are excited and chomping at the bit to present some ideas to the full council in about a month. So more to come on that. Um, here's a zoomed in, so you can see legacy and how it connects to our future downtown area. And then this is the Green to Cedar River Trail, and that's just that synergy with that uh non-motorized system. Uh, and so downtown standards, it just shows you where downtown was, um, what is important about this, this has been going on. We, I kicked it off in two thousand nineteen before the world shut down with some, some workshops with our community. And we said, we, it, we heard from the latter, we needed downtown and we worked on where should it be? And they said, this is where it should be. And they said, we started with forum-based zoning, but we've kind of more, we're work, we're looking at a little bit more holistically now that we it's on through a planning commission and it's with council, made it through planning commissions, with council right now. We're super excited that hopefully by the end of this year, we will have uh downtown design standards and guidelines in our code. We know that there's developers already with um tentative plans and they're chomping at the bit, ready to go. So we're excited for that, that connection to our legacy site, pulling everything together. It's just a, a lot of great things coming to Maple Valley, we're super excited about what the future holds for us. Um, again, zoomed in on downtown and with that, may the fourth be with you. Whoops.
We'll see in about an hour and a half. Thank you, Laura.
So you mentioned the monthly mental health first aid classes. Um, first off, that's amazing and I appreciate that as we've all seen mental health prices uh spiked a lot more in the last two years. We already had a crisis and it, this just exacerbated it. My first question is, is uh, when are the classes, where are the classes and what ages can take the classes?
So there's two different tracks, there's first aid for adults and there's first aid for youth. And we're actually doing it through our parks and rec programming. So you can go on our website and sign up through our parks and rec um programming. Uh, and um during the summer months, we had a fewer number of classes, but you know, it's kind of based on demand. They're, they're definitely on there, very easy to sign up. It is a commitment, it's eight hours, so it's, I think, two sittings, we do two four-hour sessions. Um, I don't have the name off the top of my head, uh, we are working on getting some of our staff trained to be trainers.
I just quick question, On the, On the Move, the mobile rec, is that a contracted service or?
Yep, it's our team.
That's awesome.
By the way, that just means he's gonna steal the second.
That's the best way to do it.
All right, thank you all very much, Tam.
So while that's been a little bit, Regan and Laura, to follow you guys, when we get to fifteen thousand more residents, we're gonna be right behind you and getting awesome uh video grabbing and everything. But um, I'm stepping in for Mayor Benson tonight, she is away, so uh, next page, I think I'll put it right now. So council has already introduced ourselves, so I'll skip this page. So the city of Black Diamond has seen a recent increase in its population in the last two years due to the master plan development, Ten Trails. As of April first, twenty twenty-two, the population was five thousand three hundred and twenty. And you will notice that this number is down from twenty twenty-one last year and the city has appealed for population as meant with full of that. And, and you know, just not master plan development, Ten Trails is growing. We also got one sixty-nine, that's also, we're finally giving some businesses there. So uh, right now we have a coffee shop going in, Gravity Coffee, we have a car wash uh coming in. Um, we also have uh bath fitters and a um gardening center of landscaping coming in along with them. We also, you know, we have prominent electrics, which is a big corporation, a business there. And we have uh offer of storage, but we have a lot of things happening on one sixty-nine. We're still waiting for Ten Trails to show us what kind of business they're bringing in, so we're patiently waiting on that. Um, the fiscal update, the city passed a forty-three point four million dollar budget for twenty twenty-two. We currently have forty-five employees. While COVID has had a major impact on cities, our city didn't suffer the significant revenue decreases like many larger cities experienced primarily due to two reasons. Uh, number one, our largest general fund revenue source is property tax, which remains unaffected. So we, we don't have a whole lot of businesses uh in Black Diamond. Then number two, we do not yet have a large commercial sales tax base, which is where larger cities affect, uh, suffered their biggest decreases due to less vehicle sales or businesses closed. Black Diamond sales tax revenue has, that base has uh continued to rise due to the sales tax we receive on the building material used in the Ten Trails development. Uh, and the factors mentioned above helped stabilize our budget for twenty twenty-one and continue it to twenty twenty-two. Well, the COVID nineteen response, at the beginning of the pandemic, the city went into action, closing offices to uh, to protect their staff and the community. We were able to set up remote uh workstations for most employees. This helped to maintain services to our citizens. Our emergency management appointing Kevin Esping secured PPEs for our employees. And the city qualified for the federal COVID cares grant and ARPA funding. And doing so, we partnered with the uh Black Diamond Community Center to provide rent utility assistance for residents in need. So our first amount that we gave to the community center was uh about a hundred thousand. And then we just revisited that and learned that they still have a lot of residents that needed help, so we gave them another sixty thousand. Council has been uh holding hybrid meetings since the end of November twenty twenty-one. And as of March twenty twenty-two, city offices are now open to the public. I will say uh the last year and a half, two years, it has been nice to have our meeting uh virtual as well so that more residents can come in and, and participate. We haven't had that in the past and, and you know, with this pandemic, that showed us that we can do it. And, and we were able to set that up and get our council chambers uh equipped for that. And so it's been nice to have that hybrid meeting going on. So. The Port of Seattle Grant, the community uh Development Department applied for a grant with the Port of Seattle. The purpose is to get financial assistance to build a public space on the city's property located in a historic district next to the museum. We received an award of five thousand dollars. The city sent out a survey to residents and compiled the results for our council to review. The next step will be to get conceptual drawings and hold the design suret for a public meeting to further evaluate the use of this property. So one of the businesses in town donated this property to the city of Black Diamond. And we did do our, an outreach uh to, to the public to see what everybody wanted to have on this. We did put, right now with that grant money, we put picnic tables, we put a washing station, garbage cans. And then we did add a reader boards uh for residents to, and visitors to our city to see what's happening in Black Diamond. Lawson Hills Fire Station, as part of the development agreement for the master plan development, the developer is funding the construction of an additional fire station for the city. The station will be located on the east side of the city at Lawson Street and Fox Drive. The site and construction plans have been submitted to the city and are currently under review. Construction is anticipated to start in twenty twenty-two. So Black Diamond has one fire station and that on the Lake Sawyer side. And our response time is not that great. So uh for the old town people that live on Lawson Hill uh upon one sixty-nine north of all the businesses, um Morgan, Morgan, Morgansville. And so this fire station will bring that, that response time down and help, and help uh to get that, get our personnel out there to, to our residents. So we're very excited to see this fire station now get built. A new fire truck and aid vehicle for the city. Last year, the city purchased a new fire truck and the push-in ceremony was held on October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one at Fire Station ninety-eight. In addition, the city recently purchased a new aid vehicle. The route for the vehicle was completed utilizing very high-quality three M materials. Many of the features are constructed of three M reflective material and will be highly reflective at night for vehicle headlights. And I just seen it last night when I was walking, uh, it was just coming back from a call. It's pretty spacy, it's a pretty cool uh aid car. Uh, and last Monday, this last Monday, they did do a push-in for the new aid vehicle. So pretty exciting for us to see these two, the new fire truck and the aid car uh come into our city. So the master plan development, this is the big one in our city, just like Regan was talking. The residential construction update, as of March twenty twenty-two, seven hundred and twenty-two homes are occupied in Ten Trails uh development. Construction has been going at a steady pace. The multifamily complex, the village at Ten Trails already has seventy-six apartment units occupied as well as forty-seven occupied rental homes by AMH. So Denver was, was definitely uh a booming area right there. And uh, it seems like every time I go through there and see, you know, lots that are, haven't even begun to be built on, they've got sold sites on them. So, so it's, it's quite a popular place to come. Traffic improvements, in the development agreement, the developer is required to improve intersections within the city. The first improvement is to stay at Route one sixty-nine, Third Avenue and Robert's Drive. We have currently put in a temporary T intersection to improve safety until the roundabout is built. At this point, we are in final review with Wongstop. Also, the city has started reviewing geometrics on other intersection improvements and they are, it'll go back to one sixty-nine and Robert's Drive. So we have been working with Wongstop on trying to get that roundabout built. The, the developer has the funding, it's there, but we also have Culver right there. Right? So with that Culver, uh, came some pains and, you know, a lot of agencies had to get involved. So uh, I think, you know, now with Andy Williamson uh talking with Wongstop, I think we might have a solution and, and that might be starting up here soon. Uh, so two sixteenth Avenue Southeast and Southeast two eighty-eighth Street is one uh, one location that the development agreement has uh cited for uh, for upgrading. So a signal that will happen in this intersection, so that's two eighty-eight. Uh, when you're coming down two eighty-eight, then you'll see the um, the vet across the street, there'll be an, an alert sign right there or a signal. And two sixteen thousand Southeast and Southeast Covington Sawyer Road, right there by the Lake Sawyer Grocery Store. That'll be uh still stay the same as a light, but there'll be turning lanes there. And as you've noticed, if you've been in that area, we have a, a development happening right there on the corner. The, I think it's Tammer, Tammeran, and uh, that's a senior housing development. So there'll be more traffic coming in and out of that area. And then State Route one sixty-nine, Third Avenue and Lawson Street and Baker Street, those are right down by Senex on the south end of one sixty-nine. We're looking at uh the roundabout or lights and we're gonna be working with Wongstop. Hopefully they'll allow us to put lights there because putting roundabouts there will wipe out our business. The city of Black Diamond can't afford to lose any of our business, but so, but we're working with them. The Director of Master Development Review Team, Andrew Williamson, has been working closely and diligently with the developers, engineers, and Wongstop have a SR one sixty-nine to ensure the projects meet timelines of the development agreement. So Andy is pretty awesome, if anybody has any questions uh about anything happening at Ten Trails, the development, Andy is your guy to talk to. The Covington Creek Culver Replacement Project, below the weir on Lake Sawyer are the culvers that take the lake's overflow into Covington Creek. The Public Works Department has been approved for grant funding from the King County Flood Control District for up to two million two hundred and ninety-five thousand. This will be used to replace the culvers with a bridge. It is anticipated this project will start next year and complete in the twenty twenty-four. One of the things that uh council previous one first happened and the council now is that we would like to see that uh you don't shut this road down, it's just right above our Fire Station ninety-eight. And if we shut that road down, then our firefighters, our EMS have to go all the way out to two eighty-eight, come back into Black Diamond and service anybody on the other side of that, that road. So um, it sounded like a great idea to shut it down for three months and get it done, but uh, it's, I think it's better to keep the lane open and our emergency vehicle can get through. So Springs Rehabilitation, a crisis in the city's spring water source are continuing. Construction recently wrapped up on the new pump station, which is increasing water flows from the springs to the city. Work on this portion of the project was completed by McClear and Sunsi Incorporated. Construction also recently wrapped up on another phase of the spring project. Reconstruction of the city's water transmission line between the pump station and the city's water reserves, reservoirs. This phase of work replaces best-of-cement water mains with more durable water mains. All spring projects are funded by the developers, if you heard, that's the Wolfson Partners in Black Diamond. The Lake Sawyer Aquatic Weed Control, the city applied for a grant from the Department of Ecology, Aquatic Invasive Plant Grant. We were awarded fifty thousand. The goal of this project is to control noxious aquatic weeds at the lakes or in an environmentally responsive manner that allows sustainable native plant and animal communities to thrive, maintains acceptable water quality conditions, maintains the health of its surrounding nature preserves, and facilitates recreational enjoyment, boating, fishing, swimming at the lake. Ultimately, the lakes or community desires to take free, to uh, desires a lake free of mill fill, mon, native water, lily, and any other invasive noxious weeds that impair recreational use, threaten native wildlife activity and crowd out native applied vegetation. This project will use the best available techniques to achieve that goal. And community events, this is my favorite subject, is where I shine. Black Diamond takes pride in its history and most of our events celebrate the deep roots of mining that took place in our town in the early nineteen hundreds. The Black Diamond Annual Events, the Black Diamond uh Cemetery and Memorial Day Service. And then uh, the Black Diamond Miner's Day, which happens this year, July sixteenth, in Old Town, between the museum and the bakery. And we will have vendors and craft foods and a five K, uh, a vintage fashion show. The museum will also have a skit going on during that time, so it's a great, last year was our best year ever. Uh, so it's a great place to bring your family and enjoy uh our digital. Uh, so it's a great place to bring your family and enjoy, uh, our historic Black Diamond. And the museum is open at the site to take any questions that give tours. And then Black Diamond Labor Day is September third through the fifth. And, uh, that's our, uh, historic long running, uh, celebration in Black Diamond. So we are able to still, as long as law stop allows us to shut down hybrid one sixty nine and hold our parade there. Uh, so we shut it down for about two or four hours, I think. And, uh, we have our parade. So Sunday through Monday, we have lots of activities happening on that those days. So doggy days, um, games for the kids, game for adults. That just tons of lots of fun there. So be sure to check out our website. And then the Black Diamond Bike Rodeo, this is our second year. This year is on June second and it'll be at the Black Diamond Community Gymnasium. And the police department is putting this on. They have bicycle helmets that they're going to be giving away. And they have, uh, other bike clubs that are going to come in and help, uh, with the kiddos bikes and, and just have a fun, fun day for all. And then Hometown Christmas is the second weekend in December. And the museum put that on and the Black Diamond Eagles also helps with that as well. So other community services and events, the Lakeshore Community Club that's on the Lake Sawyer, uh, July fourth celebration. That's a huge, huge, uh, awesome, uh, fireworks display. So if you ever get a chance to go out there and watch that, that's fantastic. The Black Diamond Gymnasium, my husband, I brought the, he runs that and, uh, Maple Valley keeps us extremely busy. All the coaches from there love our gym. Um, so we have basketball, volleyball, uh, badminton, uh, birthday parties. I know Sean, uh, held the son's birthday party in there one year. Um, the police department and the, of the city of Black Diamond, the city employees now have a place up on the stage where it's all of their gym equipment. So they can have a place to go to exercise for mental and physical health. Um, and we're also looking at some grants to help us, uh, refurbish the gymnasium. And then down at the bottom is the museum, the Black Diamond Historical Museum. Then right there where it says Franklin, the, the cart there. The museum does tours to Franklin twice a year. So it's, uh, always great to stop in and talk to the museum to see about getting on that tour. It's a, it's a fun tour and tons of information. And the museum is open Thursdays nine to three and Saturday eleven to three. Let's see. And then Tough Mudder, Tough Mudder is one of our biggest events that happen in Black Diamond. Um, and I went through it one year. My husband sent it a couple. One, one time was enough for me. I won't do again, but, uh, it brings people from all over the country, some people from out, outside of, uh, the United States, just for that, uh, Tough Mudder event. So, uh, if you get a chance and you want to come out and try it, that would be a lot of fun. And I think that is it for our report. Is there any questions?